That's right.
I'm calling the cough drop.
Huh?
My cough drop.
Yeah, I got one.
You can eat one?
Yeah.
Alright.
I don't want to be hacking all day.
Yes, this is. This would be on the agenda. It's on this one, this last page.
Yep.
It must be the one you're going to.
Straight here, which one?
I don't know. That's the air, our lease on it, yes, I see these. That's it. Let this come. Now. Hello, everybody, how is everybody? Dean, you feeling okay?
Look a little punk, I don't know, I don't know, is he sick or what?
We have to do some special decon over there.
Hello. Okay, so we're there.
I know.
Hey Cole, we're just getting started, you might have to sit through the part of this.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, thank you.
I forgot there, Dean.
One more minute.
One minute. There it is, my phone just said four thirty.
Okay, call meeting order. She approved the agenda. When the second proof agenda, all better.
Right.
Okay. Any citizens to address the council? Are you able to forward to the ladies?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
You don't have anything? Just a couple of things I want to reiterate to the council, I know you've talked about it before, but a couple of things. Your policy on the dirt down at the station, down here. What do you want to call it? Where the, all the dirt's piled up. Are you going to let any of the citizens use any of that? Or is that going to be something that's going to be off limits to us again? I know it was for a while, we had, we were able to go down there and then all of a sudden you got to turn off. I'm just wanting to find out, we're going to need some dirt down to Legion, I'm just kind of curious as to what.
How much are you thinking?
Maybe a couple, a couple loads, so, just to go along the one side of the building, if we decide to go that route.
Okay, I can run it by Dave, as long as there's enough down there, we just need to keep it for emergencies for the city. If we would have a main break or something, we have to have enough dirt.
Okay.
So, it's just a pre-check thing.
Basically, just.
Sure.
Just a check, it's just a check, so we don't run out.
Okay, just, just so long as all the ladies see us taking it and all of a sudden everybody decides that, hey, okay, it's free dirt again, you know, I don't want to cause that kind of a problem.
Send them my way, send them this way.
I won't hear about it, but you probably will.
Oh, I bet.
And segue into that break of the sewer lines and water lines. There's been a couple of breaks that have occurred three years ago. And the streets and the curbs have not been replaced since then. Ones over by my daughter's, or Corky Hamilton's, you know, was Chris Clark's, even has part of his driveway that's, was tore out, was never replaced. Something for you guys to please consider. I mean, it's past due. And I know it's hard to find people to work on those curbs. Been told that before, and so, just want to reiterate it, put another bug in your ear and tack it in your seat. But that's, those are the two things I had, so I'll probably stop by and talk to you about that.
Sounds good.
Alright.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright.
Anyone else at this juncture?
Well, did you want me to bring up the splash pad thing now, or is he right here, he's on TV?
Oh, he is, yes, so beautiful.
Here, we come around, yeah, okay.
She's the splash pad mom, this is Jessica.
Yeah. Hi Cole.
Yeah, I don't really see her.
Oh, hi, I'm just here, Jessica over to the side, so.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Um, well, I know you have a presentation for us, so I'll probably, I don't know if you, I don't know if you guys have questions for me first, or do you want me to just have him take it away?
We'll probably have him take it once we get down to it.
Okay.
We're not questioning tonight.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's it, alright.
So what are we talking about? Oh, we're not, we're not here yet?
Nope, we're not there yet.
Couple more days.
Yep.
Okay, approve the consent agenda. Previous minutes.
A second.
Second. Second agenda, favor? Okay. Previous minutes.
They just look like.
I do, yeah, I'll take care of that. Hear you, hear you.
Guess who's named after the last time he did it.
What, what are you doing? How's the other person in there?
No.
Oh, pick them up.
Proclamation, where at? The rolling landscapes and the natural forest of beauty of its river valleys define Iowa as a beautiful land. And whereas Iowans have a high regard for the natural beauty of the state, along with a strong sense of stewardship, and want to encourage all residents and visitors to help keep Iowa beautiful for future generations. And whereas Pocahontas has caring citizens and residents who want to build the pride and respect that we both, we have toward both our natural lands and the environment, knowing that these are essential to the cultural and economic health and vitality of our community. And whereas enhancing and supporting our community through programs like Keep Iowa Beautiful and Pocahontas County Hometown Pride Program are important to Pocahontas's quality of life. Now, therefore, I, the mayor of Pocahontas, Iowa, encourage all residents to embrace the Hometown Pride Program and undertake personal efforts that will enhance the cleanliness, health, and beauty of our community. I do hereby proclaim April, April twenty twenty five as Keep Pocahontas Beautiful. So let's all keep our beautiful wonder going.
Okay, thank you.
I do sincerely believe those things.
I know you do.
Okay.
Okay.
Approved bills?
What's, what's this phase two, why is there a discrepancy in those? Top one, five, that's what, we'll talk, oh, you won't, oh.
So Greg White is buying lot nine.
Yeah.
He is fighting us, does not want it to go into escrow. So I put him in touch with the lawyer and they are going to hash it out. So he's only putting five grand down for now. He's, he's already threatening me that if we don't go buy the book and how he wants everything lined up, then he's not going to buy the law. I said, well, you have to put something down because I have somebody asking. And then I will put you in touch with the lawyer. So that's all he put down, for now. He's already pretty wary on it.
Well, he puts some money down, he gets the lawyer, figure it out, and.
Yeah, he, he's ready to pay in full when they close. He doesn't want it to go to escrow. He wants the deed to go right in his name. Because it'll deter what he can borrow at the bank. If he's got, if that land is not in his name, then he doesn't have that as an asset to go toward the building.
Did we talk about that before, where they said that it should be that way, or something?
We talked about it, but we didn't change it. And so there's new resolutions coming, that's why I said the next meeting, because the lawyer's going to talk to him tomorrow.
Okay.
And then whatever they decide, we'll get a resolution for him, and then you guys can decide if you want to keep going.
Okay.
Okay. And we're all in Sally Bay in full. So the whole thing's on lot seven. And then that's actually a positive twenty seven thousand that came in for excess on. Expenses, so.
You like the most approved bill?
Thank you.
A second. Move second, approve the bills, all better? Alright. Looks like the splash pad.
Okay.
Presentation. There you go, Cole. First of all, what are we talking about here, Dean?
So, well, Cole is the splash, he's the splash pad man, I call him. So he's who we have to work with to make it happen, so I'm sure he's gonna, he's gonna cover all that in his presentation.
But the splash pad being, what's the project?
The splash, it's a splash pad.
Located where?
Down by the pool.
I understand what you're saying, I want to, I want that for the record here.
Sure.
I understand what we're talking about.
Yes, so to, let's see, so it would be the west, yeah, west of the pool, west side of the pool.
Okay, has that all been measured out for?
Um, we'll have to, like, measure, have to see exactly how much we want square footage wise, and that will.
Yeah, is it by the basketball court? It's east, yeah, east side.
Yeah, I think we switched it, right?
Oh, it is.
We switched, I think we are going to, it's been talked about, that we just put a, or cover.
No, it'd be fine, actually.
Nothing's fine, no. It's been talked about, just putting a cover over where the, the, help me, the shed was up, that burned down, that we were going to move the courts to, up on the Elder Park, leave the basketball courts and put the splash pad on the other side. That gives us thirty thousand dollars, we could help with the shower house.
Okay.
And help rebuilding that out a little bit.
True.
And when Cole and I initially talked, we were thinking it was the basketball, so the rough pictures we have does show the basketball court, but obviously that can easily be.
Yeah, it's, it's not a hundred percent.
So, yeah.
Yeah, but I'll give you guys an idea, and in this presentation, we do show images and the renderings that we have created, and they are located on where the basketball course we're going to be, but that will just give you an idea kind of of how we create our rendering, so you guys can see it. But it absolutely can move wherever we need it to, so, you know, just wanted to let you know that we have them created, but it's not showing the exact location currently, so.
Plumbing, there's no plumbing issues or sewage issues or anything that we have to worry about?
That's fine.
Yep, that's, that's, that's basically all we could have to take into consideration on the site, with a couple of other things, so we can dive into that. But when looking at the site, we want to make sure that we have the appropriate water line necessary onsite, or at least close to site. We have the necessary sanitary line, and then just someplace we can pull for electrical. That's pretty much all we really need for site assessment, along with, you know, is the site flat? What other park amenities are next to the site? So those are just some things we could take into consideration when looking at the locations. With that, I have a presentation that I just kind of wanted to walk you guys through. It's a high-level splash pad one-on-one, is what we call it. There's a lot of detail that goes into a splash pad, so this is just very high level. And if you guys have any questions, just please let me know, and we'll try and take some time at the end for a little bit of Q and A. But I've got about probably roughly twenty slides here, just to walk you through who I am, what our company does, and then just some keys to a splash pad project, what you guys can expect, and kind of what Jessica and I have been working on so far. So with that, I'll go ahead and share my screen, please let me know if you guys will see this once it pops up here.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Perfect. If there's nothing else, no other questions to start with, then go get started here and walk through this. Since I'm not there, it might be a little more difficult, but we can keep this as kind of a roundtable discussion. So if you guys have a question on anything while we're on the page, just feel free to stop me, we can tackle it at that time, so. Just a little bit about commercial recreation specialists and who we are. We are a recreation solution consultant and provider that was founded in nineteen ninety-nine by our president Ron Romans. And our big mission is, we want to inspire the human spirit through recreation. So whatever that may be, there's a lot of different benefits to multiple recreation solution types. Today, we're going to talk about splash pads, but CRS has been a professional consultant in multiple recreation facets since before two thousand. So we'll dive into our team a little bit, who we are and how we can assist. So we're a Midwest-based company, based out of Verona, Wisconsin. I am the Iowa territory rep, I do live on the eastern side of the state, but do get out quite a bit to your guys' area in western Iowa. And we do have other reps in Minnesota, Nebraska, South Dakota, Wisconsin, Tennessee, New Jersey. So those are just some of our core areas there, but we are headquartered out of Verona, Wisconsin. So that's where a lot of our projects started from. This is our project team, and although I may be the Iowa rep, we bring in a lot of our team members who can specialize in a particular space to help with projects, no matter if it's in their territory, outside of their territory, or what, what have you. So we pull in a lot of different people for these projects, some kind of brainstorm altogether. So these are just some of our people that you may be in contact or may help out with this project, so those are some of those faces. We are exclusive distributor of three big-name brands. Today, we're going to talk about Vortex, so Vortex is our exclusive splash pad vendor that we rep in the Midwest. Plan Heart Structures is our playground line, and then some of those big inflatables you guys might see on like lakefronts, with its systems, we're exclusive with them as well. But today, we're going to talk about Vortex, so what's unique to Vortex, what are some of the benefits of Vortex, as well as splash pads as a whole? So a little bit about Vortex, it's, they're manufactured out of Montreal, Canada. CRS itself has done over three hundred and fifty Vortex splash pads in the Midwest area. They do a great job with keeping up with the times, so they push on water conservation strategies nowadays, and creating features that are more tactile, that kids can play with and manipulate, rather than just the huge splash water effect, so diving into Vortex a little bit. What is a splash pad? So a splash pad is a relatively new concept still, you know, we see them around in the Midwest and in Iowa now, but it's something that every, not every town has yet, but I think every town may have heard of it or has interest in kind of seeing what one entails. So some of the benefits, you know, it's a dynamic zero-depth aquatic aquarium, so it's not necessarily a pool, you know, you don't get swimming lessons out of it, it's not a, it's not a swimming environment, but it does add the aquatic element to just a traditional park space, which is really cool. So it's, it's very interactive, it pairs really well with dry playgrounds, so we see great success with them when they're next to dry play areas, which adds that awesome effect of water. It is an investment, something that you'll see is in maybe a little bit more pricey upfront than just a traditional dry playground, but it's something that's really going to help propel your park space and kind of revitalize the space itself. In this case, I think we're looking at putting it next to the pool. So it's something that can be either separated completely for the pool, from the pool, or it can be kind of engulfed within that pool area, so that's just something we'll have to discuss. But it can be just another traditional free park amenity, or something that you can have users pay for play. Traditionally in Iowa, we just see it as another park amenity, similar to a dry playground. But it is a great investment for a community to look into. So splash pads are designed for all ages and abilities, so we'll dive into what we call the bay concept. And essentially what a bay is, is a certain area of a splash pad that is designed for a different age range. So we'll dive into that a little bit. And then we want to make sure that it's inclusive for all, so all of our splash pads, we require to be poured at that one to two percent slope, similar to an ADA sidewalk. It ensures that the water can still make it to the drain, there's no climbing, but it's accessible for anyone who may need to use a mobility device. When we go about designing our pads, we want to make sure the feature of our space is out accordingly, so it doesn't get too tight, so people who may be in those mobility devices have the area to, to get in and about them. So here's a couple of this benefits from different perspectives, so we'll just touch on each of these. The community benefits, it enhances the quality of life, especially after COVID hit us. I mean, it's important, I think, to get kids outside and enjoy the natural environments, just getting some sun, so that's really, really big. Fostering the community pride, one thing that you can do with splash pads is customize them. So Jessica and I have been talking about a farm theme for Hudson's Farm Splash Pad Theme, which is really cool. So those are things that you can do with a pad, to kind of make it unique to your own city or town, and kind of whatever your niche does there. Great place for young kids to meet each other, where strangers can become friends, creates a sense of belonging for their community, promotes a healthier lifestyle, gets them outside, gets them active, playing with water and the sunshine, so that's great. And then a lot of our features help provide learning and development and skills that kids may not be aware of yet, such as water pressure, you know, buoyancy, some of our features have little orbs that we can float up and down, so some pretty cool things there. Owner benefits, like I mentioned before, it's great for revitalizing a park space, you know, it's a nice, attractive, aesthetic environment, so it really increases the park usage. Lower vandalism rates, Vortex has actually done some studies on, you know, what do the vandalism rates look like when we put in nice new amenity within a park that may have had some of those issues in the past? And the results are pretty staggering, and they have a couple of really cool case studies I could send to you guys to prove that point, so that's really nice. And then obviously, a big one is no standing water, means there's no supervision required. So something that you don't really have to pay for lifeguard supervision, anything like that. So it's just a nice park amenity that doesn't have that drowning risk at all. Some of the environmental, environmental benefits, water conservation strategies. Like I said, in the early days of splash pads, you know, the big thing that was fun for kids was a whole bunch of water dumping on them, and just, the more water, the better. Well, that's not very, it's not very environmental friendly, so Vortex has gone about new strategies of creating features that are still fun, but may use a lesser gallon per minute than some of the ones that were designed in the past, so something that's really big there. It's automated and user activated, so it will have a controller to have a set hour of operations. In between those set hours, user will go up to an activator button. Once that button's pressed, the pad will run through its four-minute sequence, is usually what it is. You can customize that sequence time if you'd like to, generally it's about four minutes, then the pad shuts off, so. Yeah, it's not going to be running the whole time during those hours of operation, it is user-activated. And then with that being said, outside of those hours of operation, let's say if a kid had, happened to be at the park at midnight and went up and pressed that activator button, it will not allow that pad to run, so something that's really nice there, well. All the equipment that Vortex manufactures is made out of these recyclable materials, so a lot of the vertical features that you'll see with the powder coat on them, they are all stainless steel, you know, there's no galvanized steel, so they hold up really well to that water element. Some of our ground spray has had that lead-free brass, and then some of the plastic components that you'll see that are kind of translucent will be that polymer. So touching on the bay concept, this will give you guys a good idea of kind of how we set this up. It may be a little tough to see, some of this print's a little fine. But here's some different bays that we can classify, so obviously, we start with toddler area. This is a range that's about two years old to five years old. These features will be a little bit smaller, a little bit less intimidating, some lesser pressure features. Somewhere where the toddlers and the smaller kids can kind of just go and sit, you know, play by themselves, away from some of the fast-acting, a little more intimidating features. With that being said, the teen bay provides, it's kind of the higher energy area. This is where we place some of our cans, some of our bigger dumping buckets, some of the higher-pressure sprays. So we want to make sure that we keep that toddler and that teen bay pretty separated. And then a family bay is just a place where everybody can come together here, just some of those different media features. Usually, it's home to one of your more iconic features, so that's the last bay that we classify. Any splash pad can have bays in it, even if it's just a simple circle or a square. You know, it's just kind of how we configure those features within the pad, or how we set those bays up. So something that can be utilized in a fifteen-hundred-square-foot splash pad to a six-thousand-square-foot splash pad. These are some of the standards and features that Vortex has specifically to themselves, so if you've ever visited a splash pad and seen those blue toe guards at the base of all the features, that's how you know, oh, it's a Vortex pad. So it creates an offensive barrier between, you know, the child's foot and some of the hardware that it takes to anchor those features to the ground, so that's kind of an iconic Vortex feature, if you will. The safe swap, this is the embed that the features will fit on, so it allows you to expand in the future if you'd like to. There's only two sizes of safe swaps available, so if push came to shove and you had a pad and in fifteen years you wanted to change out a feature, you could easily just take that feature off the safe swap embed, not have to bust out any concrete and replace it with a new one, so that's pretty nice. Stainless steel construction, already kind of hit on that. Seep flow, so these are parts of the features that are translucent, they either cool water or the sunshine through them, so they're perfectly cool, and we'll see some examples of those later. This just kind of touches on the safety standards that we go through, you know, anywhere from design to manufacturing to installation. We want to ensure that everything is safe, has the highest quality throughout all the processes that go along with the pad project. These are a couple of different technologies that our features have incorporated in them. So pod sprays, pump flow actuators, those are just little buttons that kids can press and it actually redirects the water from one part of the feature to another, so those are pretty cool. Turn tech and twirl, uh, twirl tech are pretty similar, that allows the feature to spin three hundred and sixty degrees. So it's not just a static feature doing one thing the whole time, you know, kids can manipulate it and spin it. And then twirl flow, those are little nozzles at the top of the features that twirl them, they're all with that water pressure, so some pretty cool things there that are integrated in our features. Okay, kind of switching gears. What do we consider when we meet a new city? We want to consider your goals, that's the number one thing, so trying to develop what your goals are, you know, what do you want this pad to do? Like we talked about earlier, do you want it to be a free amenity? Do you want it to be a pay-for-play? So what are your goals and what do those look like? So need to take that into consideration. Space, where is your space available? How many different spaces do you have that this pad could go into? What space may work the best? You know, which one has the water line, the sanitary line, parking, additional park amenities, et cetera? So definitely want to determine which space may be the best fit for this pad, that matches your goals and your vision. And then budgets, obviously, very important thing, we don't want to create something that's super over the top. We want to understand your budget, and we want to work with you and consult on what we can allow and get for your budgets. We definitely don't want to go over, we want to respect the city's budgets, so that's something that we consider as well. And then this is something that, you know, we can kind of get into deeper conversation about, is what kind of splash pad are we looking into? So realistically, in Iowa, we could do two different variations. We can do a recirculating system, which is basically the exact same as your pool you have there. So it's treated water, that water's held in an underground holding tank. When the pad is activated, that water's pulled from that holding tank, sent out to the pad, and then it'll drain back and it'll repurpose and go back to that holding tank and be cleansed. So that's something that's similar to your pool, where it'd have to be tested twice a day by a certified pool operator, so it just gets a little bit more detailed. What we have currently proposed for the design that Jessica and I have created is a flow-through, so that's simply taking your potable water from the line, it runs the pad manifold, goes to the features, and then drains away the sanitary. We do get a lot of questions about can we drain it to storm? Unfortunately, in Iowa, we cannot, because the D and R class has the water as gray water, once it makes human contact. So we have to run the sanitary in Iowa. We'll dive in into these a little bit deeper. So the flow-through itself, there's multiple different housings for the manifold. This one shows a subterranean vault, so you take the water line, run it to that manifold. Once that pad's activated, it splits up that water into the individual lines, runs through the features, and then drains out to sanitary. So pretty simple, pretty straightforward with the flow. runs through the features, and then drains out to sanitary. So pretty simple, pretty straightforward with the flow-through. Recirculating system, a little bit more in depth. So here's your underground holding tank that you can see there. This is another housing mechanism for the manifold itself. That water in that holding tank for the system will be cleansed twenty-four-seven. So it's constantly on that filtration loop getting cleaned. And then once the pad is activated, then there's a separate pump that takes the water from the tank out to the features and then down to the drain. You can see on the right-hand side, it has a debris trap and rainwater control. So once that pad is activated and that chlorinated water is coming back through, it will run to the tank. If the pad is shut off, let's say on a rain day, that debris trap will actually rotate a hundred and eighty degrees and that rainwater will then run off the sanitary. So it's not going back into your holding tank, which is nice. So just a couple more components to add to for the recirculating system, along with some regulations that come from the Iowa Department of Public Health. Touching on just kind of the design aspect of everything. So these will show you some good images on what you can expect to see from us when we're kind of finalizing your concept. So we started with just the space, you know, what space do we have available? What vision does the city have? And created a couple of initial renderings here. So once we get through that, we'll have our LAs and our engineers from Vortex and CRS start to create these plumbing and electrical schematics and plans that show you exactly how the pad will work, what everything looks like, subterranean. And then basically, what does the pad look like itself? What's on the pad? What does each feature have? Does it gallons-per-minute rating? What does the pad flow total, et cetera? So this will give you an image of the current renderings we have for the Pocahontas Pen. See, you can see there, we have it early to the east of the pool. Like I said, we can move that wherever we need to, just depending on what space we end up going with. But these will show you the renderings that can be created. So you guys can have a good idea of what that pad design will look like. When we deliver these, they're definitely not set in stone. We want to deliver these to you guys, get your feedback, and see if there's anything else that you'd like to change. But those are just some renderings that we have created. So park, that last one, I'll go back to it. This is what we call the spray zone. So this will actually show you each feature over on Legend to the left-hand side. The quantity of that feature, how many gallons-per-minute does that feature run at? And then at the very bottom, it's kind of cut off here, there's a gallons-per-minute total for the pad hole. So those are just some things that we deliver to you guys and working through this. And with that, I think that's all I had. I wanted to keep it relatively shorter for you guys. Like I said, super high level, but please let me know if you have any questions. I'm happy to help answer them now.
So one thing that you have to be cautious of is going to wear out or go bad first.
The activator buttons themselves, that definitely are the first thing to kind of wear out first. Luckily, Vortex has a quick disconnect for them. So that pad will have the baller that holds the activator button off the ground. And then that button on top, you know, when kids touch it with wet hands or kids are always the most gentle people in the world, they might slam their hand on it. Those are usually the first item that we usually have to replace, probably about after five to seven years, we have to get our new activator button. Another item would be some of that polymer seep flow. So just on this thank you page image, right below the big dumping bucket, you can see that red flower with that orange post. So that red flower itself would be that seep flow polymer. We've had anywhere from kids, you know, they're climbing up the feature and kind of just wrecking that to taking sticks and pounding on it. So some of those items might have to be replaced as well. The stainless steel, the brass, everything like that holds up really well though. So those are probably two things that I would say are most repaired items.
Do you have to watch putting it close to like trees if you have leaves and different things like that cause a big issue? Because I'm thinking that west side of the pools got quite a bit of shade.
Yeah, if there are leaves that are going to be falling on the pad, we just recommend going out there maybe once a week and making sure that they're not clogging up the drain, maybe brushing the pad off. But the drain does come with a strainer in the bottom of it. So all you have to do is pull that drain lid off, pull that strainer basket out, and that'll catch most of the debris that gets through the drain cracks. But leaves is definitely something, yeah, we want to make sure that it's not clogging up the drain. Usually, the, once the pad's done for the season, we recommend just, once the leaves have fallen off, maybe in October, November, going out there and just making sure that that drain's clear before the startup of the next season. So just something to keep an eye on.
Couple of those trees might be coming down.
Is the winterization process on it pretty extensive or is it pretty easy?
No, pretty easy. So that's something that we include just as an initial thing when the pad's all constructed and ready to go. So we would include one winter startup, winter, or winterization and one startup. So I would come out to the pad and walk you guys through whomever would be in charge of taking care of the pad, how that works. Technically, we basically just have to drain out each line, each feature line. There's a ball valve in the bottom of your manifold area. That line will slope back to the manifold. So the gravity drains back. And then we recommend just blowing those lines out. And then some cities will put like Harvey and Freeze on the lines as well, just to ensure that it doesn't crack underground. With the flow-through pads themselves, we're starting to plumb them with PEX instead of just Schedule 80 PB CD. So that also offers another, you know, form of protection. Those PEX lines are a little bit more durable. But definitely something we come out and train you guys on. And then if you had any questions in the future, I'd be happy to stop by again and we can look at it.
With the recirculation water feature, that would be more expensive upfront, but would that save money in the long run for water cost?
Yes, depending on what your pad's gallon-per-minute is. So we actually have cost comparison sheets. You can actually plug in some of the numbers that you get from the city, some of the upfront capital costs that it may take to purchase the recirculating components. And you can actually see like, what is the payback period on water savings if we go into a recirculating system? So it's something that we can help compare. Usually, with a pad this size, we would recommend a flow-through just because you won't see much payback until probably after fifteen to twenty years. But that's definitely something up to you guys. If you already have a certified pool operator on staff, because if you have a pool, it may be something that may be more beneficial to you guys than, let's say, a city that doesn't have a pool at all. So something that we definitely can look through, absolutely, depending on the features and the water amount that the pad has as a whole.
Where are they thinking? Where are you, are you thinking on the other side of the door?
It depends. I mean, we just have to talk about it.
I guess the recirculating one, it's low there.
Yeah.
I know that parks flooded in the past, you know, being dirty flooded water.
Sure.
And the recirculating one probably isn't the best.
Sure.
That's something we're currently going through right now with the city of Ida Grove. We're putting a splash pad in a flood plain. So there's a little bit of hurdles to get over there. That one is a flow-through system.
Hello?
That's where I could assign it as you, not as the accounts.
So do I have to?
Nothing. It's that you got to reset it all when you like. I mean, it would be timeouts there earlier.
Whatever your timer.
Because you're, the time you're signed up is the paid account. You signed up as you, you're not paid.
No, I'm not.
So that's forty minutes. That's the only get forty minutes.
Oh, shoot. Well, what do we do? Sorry, Cole.
I can even just...
Or if you can get him on the phone, you can just do it.
Would you like to, or you'll tell him, like, we can just email questions later or whatever, just like that?
We could take questions and send them to him.
Okay, I'll text him.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
So how is everything going with the splash pad you guys is in?
Good. Right now, we have like thirty-five thousand from just individuals and businesses. And then I applied for like ten or so grants that obviously that takes like months before you get them, if you get them. But I'm pretty much applying to like grants that I know other splash pads have gotten, like Walmart, Blue Cross. They will give like up to a hundred thousand dollars. So I'm like really hoping on that one. Iowa Select, they gave a lot to the splash pads, like ones that Emmitsburg got, those are like the ones I'm trying to hit hard. So, yeah, so we're doing some like fundraisers and stuff too.
Cool.
What splash pads in the area have these guys done?
Algonia and West, uh, I don't know about, but Algonia and Emmitsburg for sure do. And I spent like six months researching. They've definitely been the most responsive. And when I talked to Algonia, they said they spent a year researching and calling like anyone who owns a splash pad. And it was like an overrated go of Vortex and that they've been fairly happy with them. So, you know, that's what I, that's what I'm hoping for. But yeah, really great, really responsive. And he sent, again, with like things ever adjusting and depending on location, whatnot, the rough estimate that he gave was about three hundred thousand. So actually lower than I thought it was going to be initially, so.
Awesome. How many square feet are you still? That's what I was going to ask.
Um, I don't know yet. So he has like the drawing and I told him we don't know the exact numbers, that we have to go out there and measure it. So...
But what, what square, he's got to have a square foot that he's figuring for three hundred thousand.
I don't think he's actually, well, yeah, you're right. He's giving me something. I'm sure I have to look back. Basically, if anyone like wants to go out there with me, whoever's the decision maker.
Compared to say Emma Spurs or Algonias.
Algonias is really big.
Yeah.
Like, I could...
How about Mallard?
It would be a little bigger than Mallards, but...
Similar to Emma Spurs.
Yeah, maybe slightly smaller.
Emma Spurs, I don't think.
I haven't seen it since I was a person.
I guess one of Spirit Lake is pretty big.
Yeah, Algonia.
I think Mallards is fairly compact.
Yeah, it would be a little bigger.
Bigger than Mallard.
Yeah, Algonias is twenty-four hundred square feet. So we're not going to be that big. So yeah, I guess we have to go out there and you guys can tell me exactly like what my boundaries are. And then we can really like go from there. And let me look at what Cole has since.
Well, it looks like the rendering that it did, I mean, there's going to be sidewalks. Obviously, we're looking at a different spot, but it's definitely an improvement on the visual aspect of it.
So is that three hundred thousand including shower house and stuff like that too or no?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, does not include that, so.
Is that three hundred thousand including, so like they had sidewalks and... Is it, or is it basically just the pad area?
I can pull up what he, I don't know if I have. Like that inside.
I would see it.
Yeah. And then you're going to make the sidewalks ADA, so the wheelchairs and stuff to get up.
Can we continue or so?
Yeah, if you want to continue, then I'll show up, tell you once I find it and share.
Okay.
Okay.
Heritage Park Lease, come up with some interesting developments there.
Yes, so the Heritage Park Lease, actually Alex could probably jump into. It was signed in oh-nine. It was supposed to last three years. It would not update automatically.
Yeah, it's not been a park since twenty-four.
And according to that document, everything that we have put on there should be taken down.
Anything permanent is, yeah, there was never to be permanent placed on the park, according to the lease of the city. So now, the bank, when I talked to Pat McNeese, he had said that two years ago, they actually received a private offer for that. But even they thought that the lease was still in effect, which it wasn't. So I don't know. Again, it's a way forward in how you guys want to negotiate this. Obviously, it works really good as a park. It's really nice to have as a park. On the flip side of it, you know, if it's not a park, I just don't recommend doing the lease. So my, from the police chief's point of view, and like I said, if people are out there drinking and stuff like that, and it creates problems. I mean, obviously, the bank didn't want to, you know, have him to have their own with just a painting of the mural. So are they willing to sell it then or? And that's up to you guys. I did not get into the negotiation side. I figured we'd let you guys make that decision. I'm just concerned that, I would like to, I mean, I would encourage not to have any lease because this is exactly when I talked to one of the public attorneys I knew just to do a little bit of research. Because I've never heard of a lease, lease park in Iowa. There aren't really any.
Maybe we're using the wrong word then. Maybe you should call it a park.
Well, that would be something. So, yeah, however you guys want to do it, it's just my concern is the lease. And obviously, like what happened with this lease, it was non-renewable. It lost, somebody lost track in twenty-twelve, it happened. But now that both, both sides lost track of it, and now we're sitting that it actually isn't, you know.
I've reached out to Pat. He has not responded. I don't think he was in office today. They're in the process of hiring. Craig's retiring. So they're hiring a new president. So they're showing him off and taking him around. I just, I don't think that's on.
So, but yeah, somebody needs to, between however you guys want to do it, set up a meeting. And maybe that's a joint meeting with the board. Because when they had the offer two years ago, the board said, no, we want to keep it a park. Again, at that time, they never looked at the lease either to realize there is no lease. So.
This is not void.
Yeah, but yeah, twenty-twelve it is. So. And it's very clear that it is non-renegotiable unless you...
Yep, initially.
Initially, I need a brand new lease. So there's no looking around, you know, trying to get around some of the stuff in there. So. But I don't know what they're willing to do. So.
I don't know if it's up for sale. I don't.
Yeah, that's the situation that they're going to have to put up if we don't figure out something on it.
I think they have a worry that it'll end up being somewhat either like a competition or, that's what I get from it. You know, because initially, it was supposed to be a drive-through. That didn't happen. I don't hate, Pat would go into who this company was that wanted to buy the...
People tell me.
Yeah, he won't say, which I get. But like I said, yeah, it's going to take a little committee to go, go chat with Pat and then see if you guys can negotiate something on it. I mean, and that's if the city wants to keep it, which, I mean, it has become kind of a fixture head. So it's tough to get rid of. So. I just don't know.
Unless we have to take all that stuff off of there. That's our feeling there.
And we've got benches already waiting to be put up there, you know, even the summer.
We'll just see what Pat says and see if we can have a conversation.
Yeah, it'll be with their board.
Some way to get around the bench or something.
At least get a new lease started if that's the way they want you to move on from it.
Yeah. We can set something up. Who, who feels comfortable?
I know what you're talking about.
Okay. I mean, I'll go too. I'm just saying, if somebody...
I'd start.
He knows we're coming. He knows, you know, he knows it's up.
Because when I told him, I said, so, because we didn't even have a copy of the lease to work if I, so I'm talking to Pat and Alex, he says, they didn't have a park since twenty-twelve. Hey, Pat, you got me. So. But like I said, they didn't know either until Pat was...
It'll be tailed until, you know, we figure out how we want to go.
He goes, we're going to all...
Hold his position.
Yeah. So you don't have to hold on that.
Yep. Okay. Next is lifeguard salaries. It's just a one-page little note. We are paying our salaries, our lifeguards nine dollars an hour, where they are having to pay to be certified before we even hire. So the state average is twelve eighty-eight to sixteen forty-nine. So I didn't go that high. But even if we would start them at eleven fifty, most of them don't stay three years. This might keep them three years. And then as she adds management responsibilities and the WSI certification that they pay for, that will put them at eleven eighty. If you guys are okay. I just, I think nine is hard. We need fifteen lifeguards and we can't hardly keep, you know, eight, nine, ten.
And that's the same problem last year.
Yes. Yeah. And then I put a little more in there for Maddie because as this splash pad comes about, that's going to be more responsible.
Sure, that's a long ways. We're here now to, uh, responsibility of splash pad. And we should have a lifeguard deal. That's another reason.
Well, some, whoever's going to take care of maintaining the water will.
It'll be Dave. He's our only certified pool operator.
There's three in a light car. Dave's not the light car. Light car, he's a splash pad.
That's fine. That's fine. And we have to figure out how we're going to do it because the splash pad is going to be free, but they have to pay to be in the pool. So our little one's going to have wristbands so they can go up into the bathrooms and the showers, but not in the pool. And we're going to have to figure out something that's separate. And those that have a pool pass, everybody, they pretty much know at the pool. So I think that would be harder for the little ones.
If we're, if we're talking about putting on a horse side, harder. You want a side creek or we've never...
No, we're just talking about...
We have never talked about that.
We, we talked about that a little bit, but it's going to cost so much to get water to the sewer that it just didn't make sense to do it.
But you, you were talking about the shelter.
Yes.
Oh.
Oh.
We're just, I think we're just gonna put a shelter house back up, but it'll be just like a.
Cause at one point you were talking about.
You were saying putting up a separate shelter house.
Yes, yes.
At one point, we were talking about with the basketball courts there.
Yes.
Doing a shuffle, but. That's why that got brought up.
Yeah.
I do have answers from Cole, he sounds like a good guy. He said he has, the drawing is about two thousand, but that can, square feet, but that can be adjusted. However we want, and no, the sidewalk, that's not in the, in the, like, whatever.
Right, the pit.
Yeah, correct. And he said that they can work that up, obviously, he also included. Um, that with all that, it's rough and does not take local labor, donate material into account, so.
Okay.
But he said, I would also recommend the use of local labor to excavate electrical concrete, that's usually cheaper than hard to carry it up.
Wonder if you could. That would be a payment, you know what I mean, some, for some local excavation company or something like that, instead of writing a check, they could donate their time.
Yeah.
Just by getting a deal.
Yeah.
A check or something, and then they could, you know, get their name on something.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be nice to have a plaque of people donating.
Yeah, and we do wish to have that, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Right now, I haven't said that anyone who donates ten thousand or more will be on a permanent sign there. But certainly, yeah, someone did like excavating concrete, all that can sound good up there as well.
I know Rotary is going after a grant that'll be ten thousand, we'll match it for five with Rotary, but. It gets them extra perks for the Rotary, so they get a plaque from Rotary, but it'd be the same thing, but it'd be ten, right?
Yeah.
So, wow. We wanna do this then or increase it or pay?
Are you okay with the pay and we'll leave Maddie's alone? I left Dave's alone, that's what he gets paid and that's not gonna change for him.
If we, if we're talking about a raise due to the responsibility of splash pad over a few years down the road.
Exactly.
And honestly, it took more pause on Dave's shoulders than anybody else's. So I think that if we're gonna talk about a raise, we, we either split or we're watching Dave's.
Couple of years down.
Down the road.
We'll see how long we got, and he's talking the title on the hunt too, so.
Wait, if he gets a five million dollar raise. So we need to decide from the raise that like, from what to, from nine to what?
Eleven fifty, and if they are assistant managers or WSI certified, which is they can teach swimming lessons, they'd make eleven eighty. Just a very simple.
Have we talked to any other pools around to see if that's kind of the staggered place?
Check the funds. Funds.
Yeah, I know neither, I'm just, I didn't know thirty cents is.
So very robust.
Yeah, that, I, that's what I figured. Cause we had this discussion, I feel like last year.
Bradley hasn't been touched for a while.
Oh, it's low ball, I don't know why you want to do that.
Yeah.
I could get him though.
Right.
I would maybe contact a few more.
Cause how long, we probably need to get going pretty quick, you know, I wanna.
Cause we're getting ready to vote, that's the thing, we're gonna put it out.
Lorenz has got a pool, they're looking for more lifeguards.
Okay.
They're gonna have to be paying more.
Yes, I can reach out.
It's a bigger pool.
I definitely wanna do it there, I just wanna sure, I wanna be.
Okay.
We're not at it too low. Like I don't wanna put it eleven fifty and then Lorenz hired her. More kids are grabbing over there.
Yeah, so we can do it here.
Okay, so we can table it for now, and I'll do a little more research and we'll get it back.
Right there with the next one.
Yep.
Are they in search of those?
No, we haven't put it up, that's Maddie wanted to, cause the kids are asking her, she's at school.
What did she say about these?
She said, this is fine, she said she thinks this is nice, the kids will actually stay. Those were hurt words.
Maddie.
Maddie, she used to be Johnson, now she's Shaw. Same gal that met last year.
You know, they, they wait another couple of weeks, it's gonna put, I had eight ball on.
Just so they have time to get certified, that's it, so we don't wanna push it.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I, sooner than later, we can always have a special with the morning area, you know.
Yeah, we can have a.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let me reach out and heck, we might know something by the end of the week. Okay, so this one's here. Next, if you guys are okay with the travel. So when you travel. I picked a couple towns, I know we go to West Bend, we might go to Lorenz, I'm not sure about the others, but. That's time seventy cents for the state mileage. And then we figured thirty dollars an hour for your time while you're there and driving time. If you take a city vehicle, you just give the hourly rate, you don't get the gas. If you feel that's reasonable, for when you go to Colgate. Or, you know, when you go.
Right. Colgate won't be, we don't need every.
I don't think it'll come up much, but I think it'll be an excellent part for when you guys probably do have to go and you want.
We need to worry how we get the decision last. So like here, we're, we're like. I can say. What you wish is.
She hears the compensation for personal time vehicles.
Okay.
Her consequences.
Can we, can we put it on?
To save an hour.
Oh, you.
Maggie, maybe it only lasts a.
Yeah, cause it's still your time.
Yeah.
So. So that, would that mean? You have to keep track of how long you.
No, that just means if you went to a meeting, it only lasts fifteen minutes, you get paid the hour.
I see what you're.
You drove to West Bend, you get, you get the thirty dollars.
I got you. Yes, you don't have to. Do we have a motion?
We have a motion, so we just.
You make a motion.
I can request a squad car.
No.
You make a motion. Lance, is there ever going?
I'll second you.
Okay.
We moved in second that we. Were removing on actually the compensation for.
For council.
Council numbers. With a.
Let them all one hour.
One hour.
About one hour. Okay. Ready.
All favor.
Aye.
Stevie.
So, like I did last June, I wanna make sure that this was officially there. Um, we've agreed to replace the seventeen, because it's in the same year of strain and struggle. Um, like I did last time, we're gonna replace an SUV with an SUV, cause as, as like Rover's talked about, I think you did two times, about the equipment swapping over. So we want us, we would wanna maintain the same form factor. So really, there's only three SUV makers, a Chevy, is a Tahoe, and I think it's just too big and noisy, and I just don't see the need for a Tahoe. Um, plus, they're tough to get anyway and, and expensive. So then it takes it down to the Durango or the Ford Explorer. So, um, that's kind of where we're at, the, uh, Durango, I would request the five seven Hemi, it's forty-two eight. Or you can go the three point three, non-Eco Boost Ford Explorer for forty-five.
Three so.
Yeah.
And this has all been run through Brent, he knows this is happening, he's.
So it's officially approved in my opinion, as long as the budget gets approved. My problem is I wanna get to you guys, because my concern is with our current status of tariffs and whatnot, I worry about what's available. And even though a state contractor did, they can throw a curve at us, start raising prices, so. I didn't plan on getting quite. So, four to town? Four to three here than Stuans and Stu, state contract bill holder, so that's the way I did.
That's a good, right, that's true, yeah.
And what, what'd you say, that it's non-Eco Boost? It's a not, three point three, non-Eco Boost, cause the Eco Boost is an extra three thousand or four thousand, which has a lot of horsepower. But, you know. But what's that comparable, she said the two, the two Dodgers.
I'd like to be able to catch some people running.
Well, so that's where the price, so the per, the given amount of raising. Rover may have experienced it. So the reason why I'm looking at the five seven Hemi is number one, it's on the resale side, and then it also handles the stress that law enforcement can put on a vehicle better. Not that the Explorer can't handle it, but, but, so then I actually talked to a couple of people, including Jeff at Pokie Sales. And not that it's a one-to-one, you know, there's no easy way, but the five seven and the Eco Boost are similar in overall horsepower. Whereas the three six, non-Eco, and three three, Durango are, you know, roughly around the same. So this, this is through the state and Stu. Stu Hans, yeah, that's the Stu Hanson. This is through. New Way. And the discount. Can you go to any other Ford dealer and just compare? I can, but the, actually the bid will be a thousand dollars more according to the DA, that's what I'm saying. So if I went to Cybers and I went to try to get them, and so that's why I'm, they're actually giving us a little bit of a deal. There, so. So it, it's just the Ford, it's more than the Durango. You know, and one thing I did talk about, Laura and I had sat down and talked about it too, because I understand maybe a little dealer's a little upset with things. But the reality of it is, like, our current Ford Explorer, the twenty-two, you guys got me, you know, I don't know, probably maybe that we can replace that Ford with a Ford, cause again, the equipment inside Ford to Ford, right? But to me, when we're looking at overall costs, the Durango still saves us money in the long run. So that's my, this is my thought, honestly, this is my. And this is replacing. The seventeen, and there's, there's no equipment in that. Seventeen. Ford Explorer. But there is no equipment in there that is gonna come across, other than the radio, we guys, it's unfortunate. So. Then we have to make a decision or? I would like a decision sooner than later.
So the difference is twenty-five hundred approximately.
Correct.
So. For twenty-five hundred, we might keep business in town. Because.
Is there a warranty difference on them?
Uh, I don't believe so, I believe it's thirty-six, because, uh.
Where are you gonna have to go to get warranty work on that Dodge?
I have to go to, uh, for Dodge, it's usually where we go, it's the same place, we can only buy state of tires here in Ford.
But I mean, to get warranty work, I think that would be a town.
For Ford. I'm not saying that I will use them, because the problems are bad with the Ford Explorer. Again, we have the problem where I was told that I had an eight thousand dollar pair, that's what they told me, and we took it to Pokie Sales and it was a five dollar. I, I have concerns about the overall work. So. And I've been very, I've been very clear with this power. I have numerous occasions where we've got some problems.
What's it gonna cost to change all the equipment, what would be the Dodge, still the Ford? So not, almost none of your equipment inside of this current Ford is gonna go across, because there is hardly any equipment in it. So like, and based, and, well, Tyler can, I didn't realize it did switch up, Tyler can tell you, like, the, the console that they put in there. He actually, one night, I had to come over from Humboldt, because he had actually, his gun, it sits so low in the seat. Turned on all his lights and he's out stuck at the football field at one o'clock in the morning, with all his lights going crazy, and he couldn't go down. I had to go out there and figure out how to reset the system. So, so there's a lot of that stuff, and it's just gonna have to be replaced out and stuff. And that seventeen took a lot of use, in the sense, not that the officers were hard on it, but the way the city did. Vehicle rotations before I was here, there was no rotation, that squad car stayed on for thirty-six to forty hours sometimes at a time, and was never turned off. So it has suffered a lot, I mean, five, five water pumps now, um, it's gone through. So a lot of that equipment inside of there needs to be empty. And plus, that upgraded equipment will marry up, so I can actually program our lifeguards, I can do. It puts it, and so it's, every squad car has the same question. But once we're there, we're good. Time frame when getting these vehicles. Um, I just have to put it, once I put it in and I say, I have to have it after July first, since that would be the payday, then they both have said they're through to this, by July first, eventually. So go finish my thoughts here.
Really?
Uh, twenty-five hundred, we're talking difference. If we stay in town. Uh, in my opinion, we should stay in town, the city open. New business in town, how do we expect everybody else to? Do we make a motion to?
Whichever one.
I made a motion to, uh, my.
What's that?
Second, uh, to buy a Ford. Explorer.
Or old Dodge.
Yep. Twenty-five. Okay.
Okay.
I.
And this is, and the page is, you know, I should. And this is exactly the sheriff's office, what the sheriff's office is. Just here.
Okay. And the last thing is the solid waste commission, I guess Louise was on this commission during her time, but never visited, so. We missed a couple of meetings, they're having trouble making four, so they do need somebody from Pokie and I'm fine. The meetings are in Lorenz, Laura, I can zoom in, so it's, if you guys are okay with it.
Yep, we need to make motion.
Yep.
I make a motion. I'll say. Who's second to your point, Laura?
I need to do.
Excuse me?
Go, Paul.
Okay. Tom?
Hi.
Dean?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Hi.
Cootie?
Hi.
Hey.
Brian.
Yep.
Hi.
Alrighty. Reports.
Um, so I don't know, did you pass these up?
I did.
Okay, so I've been talking with, since I got back, with Ben on that. Uh, thing that we're gonna do. And we've been talking to Tom, Luke and Garner about just state out there, and it sounds like we spent a lot of money out there over the past years. And it sounds like there's an issue with the stormwater and the wastewater, they're really old clay tiles. And I don't know if we've done the repairs on it or not, but they're talking about, um, doing a grant, this search grant that will pay for an engineer to come in. And tell us what the issues are.
Where are you talking at?
At the wastewater plant, at the stormwater area, so after a rain, it sounds like if we get a big rain, a bunch of sand gets into the plant. And then there's a couple of people actually in town that have to like shut their sewer off. Or they have issues, and it could potentially be, I, I just got briefed on it really.
We have had two pumps go down because of sand.
Yeah, and so.
Just in my time here.
They're looking at, it's not on the agenda, not vote on anything, but they're looking at filling out a grant application, see if an engineer can come in and see what the issues are. And then from there, there's other grants out there, that would help pay, because we're such a low, medium income here, so low that they, and it's considered sanitary. A sanitary issue, so it kind of gets moved to the top of the list in terms of some of the grants. But I guess it's something that Tom said that's been an issue for quite a while, and that we've sunk decent amount of money into, and it's kind of been like Band-Aids. So they're kind of exploring that, so I'll have more information on it next council meeting, and I'm hoping to have, uh, Ben and hopefully Tom here to kind of discuss what actually the issues are. But it doesn't sound cheap.
And we line up, what's the?
They're hoping that they can put like a slip line.
Right, just like the rather sewers that we've done.
Yeah, that's what they wanna do, but obviously, to get into that stuff, take care of, they have to start off with an engineer to come in and do all of that. You can't just, okay, we need to do it, you gotta have an engineer do it, come in, assess it first, and then go out for it. So the engineer just doing that somewhere between nineteen and thirty thousand dollars. So it's kind of a, but if we don't do anything about it, it sounds like at some point, cause all these. Stormwater, wastewater lines going through roads and that sand's coming from somewhere, I mean, it's. From the sounds of it, talking to Tom, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, if collapses or major issues that are gonna cost part of it, so, yeah, they're. I think that they were saying that's the, the main way to fix it, it's a slip line, or whatever, you want to know something about it.
Yeah, we, we helped, we did the whole town.
Oh, you already did the whole town?
Most of it.
Oh, really? So then, is it must just be the stormwater that's the issue, or that was the wastewater that they did?
Apparently, the stormwater is leaking into the sanitary somewhere.
Yeah, cause they said.
They must have found it, cause if they fixed all the sanitary, stormwater shouldn't have been getting in, shouldn't be getting.
Because they said that they had a pump that should last like twenty-some years, burn up in two or three years, because if they're getting too much sediment and other things in there. Apparently, Tom had to climb in there and dig out sand here not too long ago, when we got a big rain, so. Although, hopefully, Tom will be here the next meeting, more Ellis than I can describe it than I did, but I wanted to just give you the heads up on it.
I can get Tom here. Tom Reese, did you have anything to chime in? Yes.
I don't have you.
Okay. I will just tell you, Kevin Canute's got his grade one, yay, first time, that usually doesn't happen, so if you see him, congratulate him. And then Tom and Joe Medved own like eleven and twelve of phase one. They are offering, they would like us to consider them buying the single lot across from, from. They are offering, they would like us to consider them buying the single lot across from, from them, which is lot one for phase two, but they wanna buy it for half.
The one with the well on it?
The one with the well.
What would they gain with it?
I'm not sure, but they're gonna be, they're coming in from a farm, so I think they have more stuff than what they realized, so I don't know if. I mean, if we're gonna make it be a house, if we're gonna make it be a shower. She shed, I don't know, that's, they're just asking. So we'd have to know the parameters of all of it, but the sale price.
They can't put a building up on it.
Yeah, I mean, you have to follow the code.
Right.
Unless we made an exception, but.
We already pulled that down.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. She just wanted to ask.
It's probably a tough lot to sell, but it depends on what they're used for, it was, I guess.
Okay, I can get more details. Before we say A or N. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. That'll be good. All right, Kyle, your turn.
So, um, in the month of March. Um, when we had meters read, there were a hundred meters, water meters that did not read properly. And, um, so it took a couple of weeks to figure out what exactly was wrong, and I worked with Itron. And they were saying that, uh, meters were, uh, type three, which is like about twenty years old. And, um, so.
I can see.
So. Um, I'm not too sure exactly. On some of them, they have been reading the same or not reading for several months.
Some of them for years, some of them are five years.
How did they know?
They had a list and they went by that list and knew.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
There was a list of, uh, people that would have an estimated amount of water consumption. And so, um. I know a lot of these meters, to get it back on track, they're gonna be, eventually need to be replaced, and, um. I've checked each of these accounts and made corrections on some of the meters that were. Um, not put in correctly, and so I fixed all of them. And, um. So. I guess the next couple of months of reading the meters will definitely let me know. If the issue was solved by correcting meters or if they need to be replaced.
If I like span of the meters, about twenty years ago, if you're.
Yeah.
Saying when you're talking.
Uh, yeah, but I, I don't know too much about the new meters.
I didn't know what they. So when you say you correct the meters, you mean they're read by your computer?
Yes, and so, um, the, we have a tablet, and, um. The tablet reads specifically, um, with meter numbers, and some of the meters have different, um, amount of decibels, I guess. And, um. So I don't know, maybe Randy put in, um. Like nine, like several nines, and that will suffice for that time being, but. With this new tablet, it's not reading correctly, because it needs to be a specific. Number, and so I changed them all to be the rap, the, um, er, the er number for each water meter, so they're all specific to that water meter. So that should fix the issue, if it doesn't.
Four more meters.
It's not just.
Yeah. Cause if we, if we can get all of these meters read correctly, then we're gonna have a significant amount of consumption that is. Paid for.
Well, cause where those meters, the assumption is then they were all reading low or not reading at all, and they weren't getting built anything?
No. They were getting built, weren't they, just the regular?
A small amount.
Small, low.
Or a low water bill isn't on.
I wish my meter was. So what's your? That happened to me for a year. I don't know. Oh, really? You mean low all that time? You think like years?
Oh, yeah.
Some of them are. I have.
Yeah, some, some are even high, but.
Like two hundred.
Yeah, when they hit for a.
Be like a minimum, that it would be really interesting, so much.
You can look through the accounts and go down page after page, and each month their water was twelve eighty-one, twelve eighty-one, twelve eighty-one, twelve eighty-one, for years. So who knows what actually was there.
Have, does any, have you talked to the meter company at all about? Life span of these meters are twenty years, and after twenty years, you need to start replacing, are they?
Yeah, they've confirmed.
And that's what they said.
Yeah. These are the older ones here in town, if you look at the addresses, you'll, like, they're. They're about three hundred and fifty bucks.
They have, they have to try a rotation.
No.
Do they have to go whole meter and. Replace the.
It's just the top.
You know, it's actual computer.
The, the old ones, they, they had to replace the whole meter.
Yes.
And now we're on.
Now we should be able to just replace the top.
The top.
Yeah.
The part that.
And using that tablet saves, it takes Scott a day and a half to walk around and manually read all of them, if they read. The tablet took, what, an hour and a half? He drove around town, hit the same north, south, whatever, and it read the whole neighborhood in one time. So.
Cool.
Way more efficient, but we just have to get there. All right, so.
Anything else?
Speed signs, you haven't skipped me, so.
Oh.
I know, so.
He has skipped you.
It's like, no.
I did want to say.
So the, uh, the mayor's always, what he loves is our speed signs. Um, I sent, I spent a couple of hours with our DOT representative or signing person, they've authorized us to have four automated speed. Signs that basically report your speed as you're coming by them. The four locations that, using my data from our traffic stops and their data, uh, married up pretty well, so the state traffic engineer has approved the plan. And that is you will have inbound speed signs at the forty-five on the south, at the forty-five on the west. You'll have one right outside of City Hall here and the lot next door, across the street, that's a twenty-five going across Main Street, where we have a ton of problems. I mean, most people are in the forties by the time you get here, cause there's no speed sign between here and Casey's. And then our lakes traffic heading north, I even went out there and I, I grabbed a couple of speeds and we had, just within the two blocks from the stop sign. To Second Avenue Northwest, a flashy sign, we had people at forty-six to fifty mile an hour, and that's with constant enforcement. It doesn't, it doesn't matter, so in, uh, your brother's front yard there, there's gonna be, that speed sign will get replaced. And there'll be a thirty-five flashing outbound.
Cool. I'll let him know?
So, yeah, so and that should be, if we're, in the next two weeks, those should probably be done. So. And I did get, uh, there's gonna be an option, uh, the first year is free, because I actually kind of like the data collection on it, just to see what the speeds are. The two of the signs they're giving us, they actually have the speed collection software in them, so after a year, then it costs us, but we'll see how that goes. I'd ask them, cause it'd be kind of neat just to see what our speeds are. Uh, next council meeting, we'll start on the ordinances, um, the first step will be approving the last round of ordinances as our new current book, get recodified. And then we'll start going piece by piece through, so if you have pet projects, like cars parked in yards and, and all that other stuff. Um, let me know so that I can make sure that I give you enough available options, but we will go through this for several months. And it's just.
Can't wait.
And then finally, I need to, last week, we were gonna try to send a twenty eighty meeting with Lorenz, uh, it fell through due to various timing problems. Who is available this week and what's a good time and day? They're supposed to be doing the same thing as the council meeting right now.
Probably tomorrow and the next week. Who else?
I'd like to be there.
Yes, after you talk during the day or.
Probably more for the evening time.
Okay, let me know.
Okay. So, we'll go from there, and I just.
I would.
So we'll see, like I said, I haven't seen anything back from them yet, on their meeting, which is occurring right now.
Yep.
We'll go from there. We'll get that knocked out, and then the twenty eighty will also be in the next council, generally, for your approval or denial.
The next meeting is the twenty-first, and the main thing is approving the budget, so. We need to make sure we have.
Definitely.
What was the last one, three and a half minutes for the hearing? I'm guessing.
Same thing.
Fairly.
Without further discussion, then.
Yeah, yeah. So, motion to adjourn.
Hello.
Motion, I meant somebody to.
Well, bro.